All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the regular meeting of the RBB Community School Corporation Board of Trustees. This is our regular July meeting. And let the record reflect that all board members are present. Were there any visitor comments?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any visitor comments, please step forward.
Okay, seeing one, I will as part of the introduction let you all know that, and you may have already seen the email that went out, but there was a reported cyber attack on RBB, and it didn't happen. It, we have some forensic specialists that have been looking through our system. Rick has done an amazing job of looking at what they gave us and figuring out that the place they got it from isn't even in this country. So, and so we've let those people know what's going on. But all of our data has been secure. Nothing has gotten out of RBB hands. And we took immediate action to look into what was going on. And I really appreciate the administration and especially Rick for all the hard work of making sure that our stuff was safe. And again, he tracked down the actual location of where it came from. So again, I'm just glad to report that that's not us. So with that being said, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes. This would be for the June 17th, 2024 regular board meeting. There is the treasures report for June of 2024. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, sir. The gross wages for June 7th, 2024, for $835,251.63. Gross wages for June 14th, 2024, for $643,023.36. Gross wages, mini payroll, June 28th, 2024, for $2,112.34. For a grand total of that, for $1,480,387.33. Vouchers, preclaims, and prepays for June 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2024, for $3,481, I'm sorry, $481,834.61. For claim vouchers for 7/15/2024, $266,337.85. And a grand total of $3,748,772.46. For a grand total of $5,229,159.79. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I've already seen it. That's why I wasn't, didn't look like it wasn't, I wasn't paying attention. My power is at home, so I had to plug in my computer and my watch and my phone. I try to use some of the power here since I don't have it. But, okay, so now we have personnel. That's resignation, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations. And that would be C1 through 7. And then D, we have personnel appointment and transfers, 1 through, let's see, how much is it? Oh, yeah, 1 through, it's all, 1 through 24. Do we have a motion?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And I believe Andy would like to make an introduction.
Or two, or three.
Yes, I'd like to introduce a few new members of our staff here at RBB. I don't have notes written down. I'm normally very much a notes guy, so we're gonna do the best we can here. But first off, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Alex Beaver and her husband Andrew. I was ahead of Dirk on this. I got first choice of Mrs. Beaver. But we had a great, an opening at physics at the high school as well. Alex is gonna be teaching 4th grade at EIS. They bring along with them their three boys. They've been teaching up in Logan'sport since they left Bloomington. I think it started off as a five-year plan to get back, turned into 13. But we're really excited to have them here in the corporation. Next up, Riley Erton. She has a, it seems like we're getting more and more interesting experiences coming in from different teachers. And Riley actually graduated last spring, but she spent a little time in Thailand teaching reading. So she brings some excellent experience there, just, you know, some different perspectives that'll be very beneficial to us. She's joining our 3rd grade team, as well as Gabby Jenkins. Gabby, student taught for Sierra Simmons in 1st grade, 3, 4 years ago. And then she, at the time, was still playing softball at IU, was a standout there. And afterwards, they offered her an assistant coaching role. So she did that for a few years, but kinda got tired of life on the road in the spring. And she went to school to teach kids, and she's really excited about that. So she'll be on our 3rd grade team as well.
Thank you all for joining, joining us. It's, we welcome you.
Have you met Mick Hammett?
No.
He will be looking you up.
We have one more introduction that I didn't make note of. I'd like to call Heather Kinsick to the stand.
I'm excited to introduce Mary Beckwith. She's gonna be rejoining us at Edgewood. She was the special ed teacher at EACC several years ago. And how long, 6 years were you there? Yeah, around 6 years she was there. And she went on to teach at a couple other schools. And now she is rejoining us as our preschool special education teacher this year. So we're really excited to have her back.
Thank you. And I would like to just point out that we really pay attention to the colleges that our teachers attended, specifically IU. So I think, I think that's why you guys are, the Beavers are coming back, right? You attended IU, and of course, we have 2 IU, 3 IU grads. And so, thank you, just wanted to point that out.
Okay, now we have the assistant superintendent's report. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Irwin.
Yes, you guys should have the cash flows there in front of you. Things don't look a ton different from what you saw last month. We closed out the month of June. It looks a little lower than what you saw, but still very close. The Form 54, which is the state aid site, they update the estimates every month. Going into the new fiscal year, the July one doesn't actually come out till tomorrow. It'll be very similar to what you, you see as far as projected tuition support payments. All in all, right now, they're using the estimate of 2643 for our fall ADM. We provide them an estimate in the spring that they use for the coming fall. When you plug in that estimate, what we're looking at is approximately just a 1.36% increase in overall funding from the previous fiscal year. So that's where things stand right now. Obviously, as we get closer to fall count and updates with ADM and where we might stay with student counts, that would change that number. But we'll have to get a little bit closer to that point to update it. Interest on cash in the bank continues to remain high. That's been a good thing for our fund, fund balances. And like I said, it's a little lower than last month, but not much. But nothing, nothing else to report there in the education fund. Debt service, we received the June settlement of tax dispersments. That was a normal chunk that we see. The June one is usually a little bit higher than the December one. And then we did make our first payment on the 2023 lease rental bond. That is one of our payments that is actually in June rather than in July. So then here during this month of July, we'll make a large round of payments on outstanding debts as what we're normally scheduled. Remember that as debts expire, and if we bring on new ones, the new ones will roll on June, December to be in alignment with dispersment and getting out of the July, January rules. Other than that, we just made a quick trustee fee, and that was all that was activity in the debt service fund. Again, there's limited activity in that fund as it serves the purpose of just paying off debts. Operations fund, still really steady. Year-end balances look really similar. That bus that we've been talking about still has not shown up. That estimate continues to change on us. The second bus, that one has been even more perplexing as far as when it's showing up. They keep moving the date around on us. We're trying to nail that down so that they don't try to move it out of this year just because of how it messes with encumbrances of appropriation and those sorts of things. And we'll kinda actually touch on this a little bit as we get into a later agenda item about when we start to look to order buses for the upcoming year. We've gotten into the practice of ordering them even a year in advance just to try to get them in the budget year that we're trying to pay for them. But other than that, we're sitting in good position. Summer upkeep and projects are coming along well, whether that pertains to overall construction or just upkeep and maintenance of things that are going on with custodial maintenance and the technology teams. All 3 of those teams are, seem to be moving right along with their summer to-do lists, and things are on track. Hard to think that teachers show back up in 3 weeks from today, but we're getting close.
Any questions from that? Okay, thank you very much, Wes. And moving on, we have the 2025 budget calendar. So Mr. Irwin, update us on that.
Yeah, so again, this is just an informational item. The last 4 years, we haven't done a work session prior to advertising the budget. That'll still hold true this year unless you guys say, hey, we really wanna have one this year. I'm always open to that. The plan would be to continue to bring that to you here in August. Go through that budget in the meeting, give you highlights of what's different and what, how this budget looks compared to last year, so we continue to highlight that for the public. And then we would advertise that to the public in that normal timeline. So again, still following that traditional method of what we've done. The calendar's there just to remind you of what that looks like, where the final voting on the actual budget wouldn't be until October. Everything getting then turned in prior to the deadline of November 1. So again, that's just an informational item. It's more so just to give you a timetable of events, to remind you of that process because it's a multi-month series process that we go through that. And it's just so that you, you have that. And if you wanna continue to see it, you should have, I can always send you an electronic copy separate as well, too.
You will be sharing the, any material that we might have discussed in a work session, you will be sending that to us ahead of time, I presume?
Yeah, yeah, so again, I'll put everything, when I do memos, even going into next month, when I ask for permission to advertise, whether that's the bus replacement plan, the capital projects plan, the budgets for education, operations, debt service. I always send you those, those highlights of where things are at. If you guys wanna get into every line item of that, we could always do that. We haven't done that the last 4 years, but again, if you wanna do that, that option's always open. But I guess I will definitely send you that information in the board packet prior to that meeting and ahead of time if you want that as well.
Is any board member interested in having a work session this year? Since it's been a while. We'll work on scheduling one this time, see if we can.
Say what?
Let's work on trying to schedule one if we can.
Okay.
If we can get one where everybody can be available.
All right.
It'd be nice for a change. Okay, and now you're gonna tell us about the adjunct teaching permit.
All right. So this one is, again, the permit number. This goes back to a change that the Indiana General Assembly made a few years ago that allows schools more flexibility when trying to fill a vacancy and, or offer new programs, classes, or supplement an existing program or school. So schools can hire an adjunct teacher but must issue an adjunct teacher permit. So you guys are actually the ones that issued the permit, not the state of Indiana. As, once you guys would approve the permit, in the consent agenda was the appointment sheet and the contract that was reviewed by Ferguson Law as it pertains to this position for Mr. Hammett to teach math classes on a part-time basis. And again, it just lays out all the pieces. So the permit is laid out based on the guidance of what ISBA has said. This is what's best practice and what the state wants to see in the permit. So we use that outline, and that's what it is that Ferguson Law reviews and then is up for your guys' approval.
I move approval of the adjunct license permit.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
3 periods a day, plus he'll have the homeroom, and then he'll be doing a prep and all of those things as well. So technically, it's 4 sevenths of a contract.
Teach him how he can retire, because apparently he hadn't figured that out.
He's working, he's working his way there, I think.
Well, good luck with that. Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. C, we're with Mr. Irwin for quite a while here. So this is, next would be the consideration to approve athletic photography agreement for the high school and the junior high.
Yeah, so this is the first time, I think, you've probably done an athletics photography agreement. A few months back, we did a in-school day picture agreement with Sheldon Photography. This one is actually with 812 Photography to do the athletics, high school and junior high. Ferguson Law did have a chance to review this. They made a couple of recommended changes. Those recommended changes were made. 812 is someone that they've become familiar with. They've done some work for the school already. You probably saw that in the board packet with some of the examples of their work that they've done, whether that's with senior banners or promotions and those sorts of things. And Mr. Bland's been incredibly happy with their promptness and their turnaround and the quality of what it is that they provide. So they wanna give this opportunity to try this full-blown for the teams. The agreement's outlined what it is that they're gonna provide and at what rates, and then what our responsibilities are as the school. So with that, I'm asking for your permission to approve the athletic contracts for junior high and the high school for photography.
I move approval.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It is a 612 contract?
Yes, so it's for junior high and high school athletics, yeah.
So fine arts is not part of this?
No, fine arts is not a part of this, no. But I think if they wanted to do something with them, they'd definitely be open to that. I doubt that they're just saying, we only want the athletics and we're done. I'm sure if they were wanting to talk to them about that, I'm sure they would.
I'll point out that Mr. Turner is a Edgewood grad, so.
Good folks. Okay, any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we're looking at ordering buses for 2025.
Yes, in hopes that we get buses in 2025. So as always, we, we do all of our competitive pricing on buses through the CISC Cooperative. They go out and do the bidding to get the pricing on the buses. What it is that we're recommending to you is the purchase of a IC Collins bus. It is not the total low bid, although it is right there within a couple thousand dollars of the low bid. Part of the reason why we're recommending to go with them is because of lead times. So what it is that they're quoting right now is anywhere between 8 to 12 months sooner than what the other places are even able to provide us a bus at the difference of a couple thousand dollars. I think that's the most responsible thing for us to do. So Midwest Transit is also offering a $2,000 trade-in on one of our old buses, which is Bus 45, which would bring the total cost of a 78-passenger bus to $160,528. We're also looking to permission to order a white Category A minibus. That is also through cooperative pricing. IC Collins was the only one that provided the quote because they're the only ones that can get the chassis right now. Again, hard to get the hands on the buses, which makes things difficult. One of the, one of the benefits of going with them as well, and we, a lot of our buses that we have ordered have been through them. But if there's warranty or maintenance or things that need to be done that has to go through them, it's 20 minutes away from us. Some of the other providers, if we have to, if there's warranty work that needs to be done or some sort of issue, it's multiple hours or at least 2 hours almost one way just to get them to that place. So there's a lot of different reasons that make a lot of sense, especially within the price differences of what we have, that make this the best option for us. And that's why we're recommending that. The price of the minibus is $117,614. But again, those, I just wanted to outline some of the variations in that, but it is through the CISC Cooperative Pricing Purchasing Agreements.
And just to explain, in a bidding process, you have, you don't, you need to take the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So you can compare things like lead times and service locations and things like that. Can play a role in that. So it just needs to be on the record that, you know, as Mr. Irwin did, to have those, have those approved. So are there, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, carries. And now a consideration to approve occupational therapy, physical therapy, and counselor status quo classified agreements.
All right, so these ones are just yearly status quo. Again, so anything that's updated is just dates and language. Again, it's been reviewed by Ferguson Law. So again, it's approving what it is that you approve, but it's for the upcoming year. Those classified agreements are 1 year at a time. So I'm asking for your permission on those.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Really appreciate all the services that we were able to provide our students through these agreements, so. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, sorry, I thought something was said. Now, consideration to purchase merchant van semi-trailer.
Yeah, so I put a couple of extra documents in front of you 'cause just some updated information. One of them was another option for quoting purposes. The other one was a printout of an email that showed that a third company that we had asked for a quote from, they actually withdrew from that today. They had sent a quote, and then when they realized some of the other specifications of what we needed on the trailer, he actually emailed me right after our phone conversation and said, this is over our head, we can't do this. So one of the things that I've come to learn through this with the, with the van semi-trailer, with the help of, of our band parents and staff, is what all goes into that. So there's not, there's not a whole lot of people that do this work and what it takes to actually make a van semi-trailer functional and efficient for their use. I've gotten quite a bit of education through this process and through one of our band, our band parents and staff, they've educated me on quite a bit of that. They've done quite a bit of the legwork on this as well, which was very helpful to us in helping to make a decision. I didn't necessarily think that we'd be able to make this decision at this point, but what came to us was a really great deal. And so I provided some of the information that was found for us, and then some of the other information that we were able to go out and find about this purchase. Some of the, the range in prices are all the way from what I'm recommending, which is the lowest quote on a trailer, all the way, which is around $130,240, all the way up to, some of them are in $220,000 plus. So there's quite a range of pricing on this, and there's a lot of customization that happens to these trailers in order to make them usable. So it's not just an empty semi-trailer that, that we're purchasing. I put in the board packet pictures of the semi-trailer that I'm recommending, a bunch of information that was in there about it, and kind of talked to you guys about some backstory about how this trailer became available. And so what we're, what I'm recommending to you is the purchase of this Clubhouse trailer, which the total price on it right now is $130,240. What I'm asking is that the corporation pay for the cost of the trailer and that the band would pay for the cost to wrap the trailer if they want the trailer wrapped, which right now, the lowest quote that we have on that is actually from Clubhouse Traders, which is $4,875. So with the part that I'm asking the school corporation to fund, which would be through the general obligation bond, is $125,365. This is a very unique and niche market. There are not a lot of people that operate in this space. I even put in the board packet, you Google search this, you find 3 companies that, that even do this work. We've talked to all 3 of those companies. So again, what we're recommending is the lowest price. So this is a trailer that is originated to 1999, that's its original date. But as of 2022, it was refurbished. And again, in that board packet, provided you information of how exactly they refurbished those, spent time on the phone with them, talking through with the dealer about their refurbishment process and what the expected life is of that trailer, which he believes if we continue to maintain it like it should, we should get another 20 years out of this purchase. So there is long-term use to this purchase, which obviously maximizes the efficiency and safety of which we use. The trailer that they currently use is in the 19, early 1980s. So it's over 40-something years old. This would be a huge improvement over what they currently have. And obviously falls in line with the type of program that we have. This program's won multiple state championships. The kids put in a ton of time. This is something that, again, make things more efficient, more safe, on-road use, and obviously shows that pride that we have and what we have for our programs. So that's why we're recommending this purchase. If you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer that. Actually have some people here from the band program that are able to maybe talk about some of the ways that this, this trailer's of use to the program and how it would help the band, if you guys would like to hear that as well.
Would have been here, but he's out of state, working, furthering his education.
I'll say.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, you have to step up, you'd have to step.
Have you seen this? I've seen it before, yeah, I've seen it before.
And I'm, I'm gonna speak completely transparent. I've been pestering Mr. Irwin about this for about 5 straight days 'cause I'm nervous about an older trailer, my biggest worry, versus buying a new one. But what goes on inside is equipped for what a band would need, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And that's what you're seeing is, would be very useful to what we have?
Yeah, it's much of a huge improvement. And from the documentation I've looked over, it has everything that we need for storage and transportation down the road, so.
Okay, and the one we bought from 100 years ago, back when I was here, is that just an empty shell inside?
Yes.
That's what I thought, yeah. 'Cause we, I remember we bought it and used it from somewhere.
Yeah.
And then we had a hard time finding somebody to pull it.
Yeah.
And Jimmy Arms was great back in the day, which you guys probably don't know Jimmy, but he made us, he made us a deal we couldn't refuse to pull it. Who's gonna pull it, I guess is my question.
Stone Belt.
Stone Belt? Okay, and that's a contract that the band has with them?
It's a sponsorship they do.
Okay.
The trailer.
Okay, and this type of trailers, they've seen this. Stone Belt's seen this trailer, or they've seen it?
I don't think they've seen the trailer itself.
But they have everything they need to pull it though, correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and then what about the older band trailer? The 2 that are sitting over here, are they gonna go to the graveyard or?
The, the plan would be, the plan, my plan would be to surplus those.
Corporation.
Corporation, yeah.
The school corporation. The, the white trailer that the band bought a few years ago.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to surplus those. The white one is, I believe, a 1980 or 1981.
Okay, so those will go by, we'll get rid of those.
The plan would be to surplus those 2 trailers, yes.
And the band's plan is to wrap it nicely, right? Okay, all right.
So the plan, if you guys do vote and approve this, would be, the next step would be to issue the PO for it and then work with whatever team is gonna wrap it, whether that was Clubhouse Trailer that wraps it, to work on the design, getting the proofs on what exactly the wrap would look like on the trailer prior to it getting wrapped.
Have they given you a delivery? If we approve it tonight, we'll be ready by?
Have it prior to season and be ready, it would be ready for season.
Okay.
If we, if we make the purchase now.
Do we have these options? I mean, will they have these, all these options in here, the instruments shelling, that?
Yeah, so the, the quote that is the, for the trailer that we're recommending, all those different pieces that were, that are in it, and that was one of the things that I found. So the, one of the companies that dropped out said, all these things that they're doing, it's a little over our head. And so they withdrew their quote because they didn't feel like they could match the quality.
Right, okay. Yeah, this is definitely unique. It's a different budget point than what we had in 2002. We, I think we paid about 2,500 bucks for the one we bought then. So it's the whole, the whole thing, the whole world has changed.
Yeah, and safety of the equipment too, because like.
Oh, I know.
The trailers like got wooden cubbies and things, and these will have like stylized stores.
Right. Right, it was interesting.
This is basically gonna be a new trailer. This is basically gonna be a new trailer.
Yes, this, yeah, you tell us they're doing a good job, yeah.
Which one of yours is Ms. Ely? Okay, so the way the guy explained to me was. Okay, so the way the guy explained to me was, a donor bought it, got, a new band director didn't like it, so they repo'd it, or something to that nature.
Yes, that is correct. They went in a different direction than the band director.
So that, so that company was motivated to move this, which is why we're giving such a good deal.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm done worrying about it.
And I'd just like to point out that, that I think we have a good record of this. We take very seriously the responsibility to spend our, our tax dollars in the best possible way. And even though some items may have a larger price tag than others, we do our due diligence to make sure that it is a need, that we're, we're addressing a need, that we, we do our due diligence on making sure we're getting the best price possible and Matt, in a collaborative effort between parents and Matt. We, I think we've accomplished that, and I, I don't know if you heard, but a little, a few minutes ago, we heard the, the band starting to practice, and that's my favorite time of the year, because I know school's right around the corner. And so I would recommend approval for this purchase.
Well, as long as we can, we can do it, and I know that we can, I mean, these kids deserve this. I feel like they've, they've really done very well, and they've brought our corporation out to the world, and I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm just, from a personal standpoint, I know, as a former band parent, I know there's a safety issue. Right. Loading the trailer, and that's one of the things I'm most excited about with this. And the ability to load, yeah.
There's also lighting, with solar panels, generators, internal, external, safety all around.
Lights in it?
Concept.
So.
So what happens if the solar panels are covered with snow or something?
Good thing we don't march in the snow. We had early autumn.
Okay, all right. I, I really appreciate the legwork that you, you guys have done to, to search this out and, and find these trailers that, you know, I, I wouldn't have the first idea what a band trailer should have in it or anything, so I greatly appreciate all the hard work you guys have put into this, and the collaboration with Matt, and I appreciate Matt and Brad. They really looked into it in great detail and looked at what other options might be, and getting this band before, or this trailer before band starts, a great benefit of that is we'd have to sink almost seven thousand dollars, I think, into our current trailer just to make it roadworthy to begin. So we're saving that amount by being able to get one so quickly. So that's yet another benefit. And one thing I do love is, I love to see our trailers and things wrapped going up and down the road, and it's great advertisement, and, and, and it's a great acknowledgement for the students on the hard work that they've put in and, and on the staff. So I wish it was newer than ninety-nine, but it has been refurbished, and so that, that would be the only concern, but I think all the other things outweigh that. And again, it has been refurbished, so I'm happy about that, so. All right, is there any further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Wonderful. Let's see, now we have Mr. Irwin's last item, consideration to approve agreement with Go Solutions.
All right, so this is an, an item that was brought forth. You saw a letter of recommendation from Jennifer Anderson in here. This is for our Medicaid billing services, Go Solutions or Asset Works Risk Management. To renew for this upcoming school year, we've been using them for a little while now. Been very happy with their services. They've been, we've, I think it's been, it's been five years now since we started working with them, and it's, it's, they've been tremendous to work with. So Ferguson Law's reviewed the contract, and so we're asking for you to continue using this service for the upcoming school year. Again, they help us with Medicaid billing, which brings revenue back into the school to help pay for those services that are being provided.
I'm of approval with the agreement with Go Solutions.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This doesn't work that well, right?
It has, yes. Yeah, I, I don't remember the name of the company that we used prior to this, but it is, it is, this is increased efficiency and the amount of reimbursables that we've been getting. It's, it's, it's definitely been a much better service than what we had prior.
When I, I talked to Jennifer about the, because I was looking at the per unit and the, the, the various costs, and so I just wanted to get a feeling for how much it was. And man, this is a bargain, considering how much we're getting back out of the, the couple thousand dollars that it's costing us. This is, this is terrific.
And that process, that Medicaid process is so particular, and you've got to have experts helping with that, so we definitely need, need their services. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Now we'll turn to Dr. Sanders for a little while. First would be a consideration to approve a contract with Final Site Communications Program.
Right, this is, I'm really excited about this agenda item because, speaking of needs, you know, when, whenever we have an emergency situation, it could be inclement weather, it could be any other type of emergency, and we need to get information out quickly. The way we've been doing it for the last several years is very cumbersome, and it takes time. We have used something called Blackboard, and that's what we do the all-call messages on. And so I, I will have to go on the Blackboard site, and you have to, there are just steps you have to go through, and then finally be able to record the message. Then after I do that, then I have to go to our student management system, Harmony, and send out an email to our families. And so if you can imagine how much time that takes, it, it just isn't efficient. Plus, we've never been able to use, we have never used text messages. So we explored some different types of programs that we could use to make our, our communication much more efficient. And so we arrived at the company called Final Site, which actually purchased Blackboard. And this is really going to be, parents are going to love it, staff's going to love it, I'm going to love it, because we can send an email, a text message, a voice message, send the message via mobile app or in website all at the same time. And so we can get that information out. Andy's here, when we had the bomb threat at E.I.S., that was probably about the best way that we communicated, because Andy was communicating with school staff, we were all working out of his office, but he was communicating with school staff. Matt was communicating with staff across the campus, and then I was communicating with parents. And we just worked really well that day, but even then, it was just really time-consuming. So this is going to make that process a lot more efficient. Plus, we're going to be able to be more specific in the population that, that we communicate with. For example, when we have buses that are running late, we'll have to send a, a email out to everybody, where it just might pertain to a smaller number of students that ride that, that specific bus. So we'll be able to pinpoint the messages we send out. And maybe the, one of the areas I'm most excited about, because we have a lot more students, or English, speak other languages other than English. And so this will translate that message into whatever language that family speaks in their home. And so I think that'll be really helpful for us to meet the needs of that population of students. So the cost of this is, it's broken up by year. So we make annual payments at the end of August. And the first one, well, on August twenty-seventh will be seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Then it goes to seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, up to seven thousand, nine hundred, then up to seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six, and then the last payment before we'd have to do a new agreement would be seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And that's just a couple, two or three thousand more, I think, than what we've been spending. So we're, we're getting a lot more for our, our dollar.
Woodin seconded, any discussion?
So it's our own contract done? We don't, oh, for another year on our old contract?
I'm sorry.
The old, the old contract, is it done?
Yeah.
So we're starting a new four-year contract?
Right.
Okay, got you.
I should have said this earlier when I was talking about the cyber attack, but him bringing it, Dr. Sanders bringing up Blackboard and the all-calls that go out. And I had heard that somebody had said during the cyber attack, where's our friendly superintendent now? And I just wanted to explain that when you have a cyber attack, one, it's illegal. So we had a, we were, had law enforcement involved, including the FBI. So it's a criminal investigation. So you can't talk about the, the details of it. And also, talking about the details lets the bad actor know what we know, and that needs to be kept from them so that they're guessing, you know, what we're, we're doing. And, and so we couldn't say anything. So our friendly superintendent is our friendly superintendent. He was just abiding by the law and, and, and advice of, because we had a special legal counsel for cyber, just as cyber issue, attack issues. And we were following what our counsel attorneys were telling us to do. And so he's definitely still our friendly superintendent.
He was not being unfair.
He was not being unfair. Okay, is, anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve the class contract.
Yes, this is an annual contract that we work with the class organization. CLASS stands for Connected Learning, Assures Student Success, and it's a program that is implemented at EPS. And one of the things I appreciate about the people at CLASS is they adapt to our current priorities, initiatives. And I had a conversation with Mrs. Whitaker, because as you know, we've, we've been working with H.R.S. and, and that program, and, and so we will make sure that, that we align CLASS with that. And it's just a really good program that EPS has enjoyed using over the years. The cost of the contract is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. And we pay for that out of title two.
I'm of approval with the class contract.
I'm second.
Woodin seconded, any discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five contingency learning and safety plan.
So because we receive, we received ESER funds, we are required to update our in-person instructional plan every six months. And as we worked through the pandemic, we had a very detailed plan of how we were going to deliver instruction, how the, the guidelines that, that students and staff had to follow if they had COVID. And as the pandemic has eased, then we've adjusted this plan accordingly. And, you know, even when we were in the height of the pandemic, we were doing our best to make sure that we, we tried to stay true to as much as possible the normal school. Now, I know during COVID, it was nothing normal about it, but as soon as we can move out of that and get back towards normalcy, that's what we've tried to do. And so this plan here is pretty much down to what our policy has always been in terms of when somebody's, has a illness and what, what types of guidelines they have to follow to come back to school. And, and it talks about that we have normal instruction now. And I'm not sure how much longer this is going to be required, but that's the only great reason why we're bringing it up again, and is because we received those ESER funds.
Motion to approve the plan?
I'll make approval.
Woodin seconded, any questions or comments?
Is it, so does ESER funds get, are we still getting replenished on that every year? Is that, we're just spending what was?
It was a one-time pushout, but it's a reimbursable. You spend it, just like any other federal grant, and they reimburse you. We have to have it fully expended prior to the end of December of this year. So it has to be encumbered before the end of September and has to be expended before the end of December. At this point, we can no longer amend our budget. We've already done final review on the budget, worked with that and gotten that approved by the D.O.E. So we're just working on finishing to spend that out. A lot of the remaining dollars are tied up in HVAC improvements that we did for air quality.
So this would be, we would have to approve this policy?
Hopefully so. We'll re-review that policy one more time and make sure it doesn't have to happen again before final spend out, but this hopefully should be the last time, yes.
But it's pretty much according to our normal school policies.
Oppose? Motion carries. Just a note on the agenda, the preliminary determination hearing for the twenty-four Geo Bond project, that was noticed to be at six P.M. So we're just going to skip over that because we can't start it early. We wouldn't want to start it early if someone was coming to, to that, so, to that hearing. So we'll hold off on that, and we'll move on to consideration to approve revisions to the Neola policies. This would be volume thirty-six, number one.
As the board is familiar with this, quite familiar with Neola policy. We work with Neola, and they work with attorneys, and they keep track of changes that are made in state law, in federal law, and, and recommend revisions to our policies. And then we run those policies through our own attorney with Ferguson Law, and they review the suggested changes and make their own recommendations. We are required to promote, present to the board on first reading and second reading. First reading is for the purpose of bringing that to your attention, giving you a chance to have a, a month to review those policies. And then the second reading is asking you to approve. I did make note, and if you noticed in the board packet, Christine recommended a few adjustments. One to policy zero-one-six-five, and a selected, or advised deselecting option two in order to give the board flexibility if there's an illness among one of the board members. The other revision was policy 6320, which added the term purchasing agent into the language. And then the last policy revision between last month and this month was policy 8210, which advised us to select option two instructional minutes. And that was just left out. We, we just, actually, I had to write color code. I just didn't put the X in there. So I want to recommend your approval for all the policies under volume 36, number one.
And now there's a specific revision to Neola policy 5136.
All right, our state legislators created a new law that has more, for some school corporations, more restrictive uses of a cellphone by a student during the school day. Really, the, the policy that we already had was not too far off of what the law was. But we went ahead and made some revisions to align our policy with the new language, which basically students are not permitted to use cellphones during instructional time. And so we took that, the time to look at our student handbooks. And we revised that language and hopefully made it more clear for students and parents. So I recommend your approval of policy 5136.
I'm sorry.
Seconded, any discussion?
This has already been updated in handbooks. Already approved, right?
Yes.
And it's not really much of a change from what we had done before.
Right.
Hear nothing further? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consideration to approve a memorandum of understandings with the Elletsville Boys and Girls Club.
So the Boys and Girls Club, they're able to offer a very reduced minimal fee for students who go to the Boys and Girls Club because of donors, but also because of 21st Century Grant. And so it's, was time for them to apply for a renewal of that grant and which required to include memorandum of understanding with the corporation and then with EPS and EIS. And they, they really need to include that, those MOUs in the grant application package. So we strongly encourage you to approve that so we can keep offering that really reduced price for students who attend Boys and Girls.
I would strongly recommend approval then.
We're about two weeks away for the moving back out?
Yes, the construction project is on out there for the redo. The HVAC system is on track. We had a project progress meeting last week and they said they are on track to meet deadline. HF5 is the contractor doing that work.
Okay.
Perfect.
Such a good partnership. Good that partnership is for our parents and students. I mean, it's something that is very inexpensive and very needed. You know, it really puts a, a, into a lot of latchkey kids. So that's, gives them a wonderful place to go.
I think it's a perfect example, once again, of just our, how special our school corporation is, that we work so well with partners in the community. And it just hit me later in the school year, how that is really becoming part of our culture. You know, maybe early on, it just felt like we were, this was some new effort to try to partner with the community, to meet community needs. But now it just feels like that's what we do. And not only as a school corporation, but we have our students now involved in working with, around the community with their student-run businesses. And people are paying attention. I think I mentioned how the one lady brought her dog to the Innovative Learning Center. She had an injury and how the students were working with to get, to build a brace. That's really a special school corporation when the community and the, and the school corporation are working so well together to meet needs. So, yeah, I recommend approval on that.
We've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You have a minute and a half for your superintendent.
You know me, Dana. Yeah. I just want to give you an update on some of our assessment results. I've been asked recently a number of times about when would, would we hear results from I read three and I learn? And the, now that data is embargoed right now. So we just missed I learned. That'll be unembargoed July 17th. And so just a couple of days away. And then I read three, we could share that information later this month. So Jennifer Barrett and I were talking and we're going to do a presentation on that information at the August school board meeting. I'll tell you what, I was looking at, being on vacation last week, I was thinking, coming back, thinking, okay, what do I need to work on? And I was a little shocked on the plane ride home when I realized, wow, school's just around the corner. I don't have a lot of time to, to get ready. And so I just wanted to share with the board just some important dates that are coming up. The school calendar is for next year, 25, or 2425 school year, is on our website. Tomorrow, I'll be sending an email to parents with that calendar. And as we do every year, we'll be giving students and staff the magnetic calendars. And my daughter and son-in-law were buying a house in Elletsville recently. And I was encouraged when I went with them to see the new houses that I saw the magnetic calendars. And so I thought, oh, that's pretty good, they're using that. So as you know, Mr. Ackerman, he works year-round. And our junior high principal Kent is here. He started back today. And, but the other principals start a week from today. We will have, I also wanted to point out school supply giveaways. I know that a neighboring school corporation has been publicizing that because of their referendum, that they're able to give free school supplies to everybody. But I just wanted to assure our community, and I'll be sharing this in our letter to parents. But students that attend Edgewood Schools, they don't have to worry about school supplies. We have a, a student assistance fund. First of all, we have a lot of school supplies that are already at the schools because of so many great donations in the past. But we have a, a student assistance fund that helps any family that may be challenged financially. The Lville Tri-Cappa Organization provides school supplies every year. They're going to bring some school supplies to the high school August 1st or 2nd. And then when we have our back-to-school staff meeting, we'll have those school supplies out for the teachers to take back to their classrooms. And then there might be others, but I just know, I just saw on Facebook that Elletsville Christian Church on July 27th from 10:00 to noon will be giving away backpacks and school supplies. And I go help with that event. And it's a fun time to, to connect with students and their, their families. They have face painting and games and things like that, too, to make it fun. And maybe I'll have a hot dog or two while I'm there. So our school offices will open on July 25th. Registration window will open on the same day. Our new teacher orientation meeting will be on July 31st. Back-to-school meeting for nutrition service staff will be August 2nd. The bus drivers will be meeting on July 31st. Our back-to-school meeting for teachers will be on August 5th. And schools start on August 7th. And then I provided you there with a list of back-to-school events, whether they call meet, meet and greet or, or welcome back to school or open house. But all those dates are listed there. And that's always a fun time to, it's exciting to start a new school year. And so I'm excited to get 2024, 25, hopefully off on a good start. That wasn't too bad.
No, it really wasn't. All those states, all those states are on our website, too, for parents. All right, wonderful. Any questions for Dr. Sanders?
Yeah, and all that, yeah, all that information.
It's already been sent home in parent newsletters.
Project includes the financing of all or a portion of technology improvements, replacements and upgrades such as computers, servers and related equipment for all school board, or all school corporation facilities and general improvements and renovations at all school corporation facilities. So I will now open the public hearing for the 2024 Geo Bond project. And I will, well, I read my statement ahead of time. So that was my statement of the project. And so now we'll go to the statement of purpose of this hearing. We'll look to Jacob McCall. He's with Bose McKinnon and Evans LLP. They are our bond counsel for this and other bonds we use. And yes, if you want to scoot out, you're welcome to.
If you want to leave.
Yeah, if you want to leave.
You're more welcome to leave.
All right, so yeah, Jacob with Bose McKinnon and Evans. Thanks, Dana. So under Indiana Code, when you're going to have projects that are a specific size and they're payable from property tax, they're considered controlled projects. This is very similar to what you guys went through last year. Here, this project is of a, not a size that would necessarily typically constitute a controlled project, but because of recent changes, we take into account, we have to look at your debt service levy rate. So since your debt service levy rate is over 40 cents, this constitutes a controlled project. And we'll have to have the two additional hearings. Normally with a Geo Bond, we would just have a 1028 hearing, an additional appropriation hearing. But we have to have these two additional preliminary determination hearings just to make sure the public has a chance to comment. And again, very similar to last year with the building corp, except that it's directly with you all as a general obligation bond. So I note for the record that there's a handout with some statutorily required information, just like last year, that just has to be available during the public hearing. And Dana, you read what the project is. The authorizations, I'll just reference that they include kind of max parameters provided by Stiefel. Bonds not to exceed $3,500,000, to mature not later than December 31, 2028. Rates not to exceed 6%. And as far as timing, we will, we will be back at your August board meeting for another preliminary determination hearing, 1028 hearing, which will be very similar to this hearing again. And then the additional appropriation hearing, which would be to take the proceeds of the bonds to be issued into your budget. And then we will, assuming everything passes at that next meeting, have to put out a notice just like before. There's a 30-day period when folks could petition to have the petition remonstrance process apply here. After that 30 days is run, assuming there's no petition filed, we can finalize marketing on the bonds. And we have a timetable, I think you all have it, which shows kind of getting through the, the 30 days at the end of September, selling bonds in early October and having funds available mid to late October. Matt, we'll work with Matt and Jerry to kind of see when you guys truly need funds. And, you know, the, I think the idea is to get through the authorizations and then, you know, whenever it's convenient for you all. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda for the public hearing is the educational need for the project and project overview, cost and timing. And that would be by Dr. Sanders.
So the 2024 Geo Bond project includes the financing of all or a portion of technology improvements, replacements and upgrades such as computers, servers and related equipment for all school corporation facilities and also general improvement and renovations at all corporation facilities. So a big portion of it is to finance technology. And as we see time, times, time and time again, it's important that we have the, the best programs, the best equipment, and quite frankly, the best people running our technology department. So definitely a need, the need is there.
Stiefel Financial Advisors, and they are our underwriter. And they let us know about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Good evening, Matt Shoemaker, Stiefel. Great to see you guys again. Same presentation I gave last month, nothing has changed. So I'll walk through this quickly and then answer any questions the school board or public may have. So looking at where you guys are today, 2024, current tax rate's a dollar five. Moving forward, this chart shows what the projected tax rate would be moving forward if you did nothing. As we've done bond issues over the previous years, we've always tried to finance those projects most efficiently, but also keep in mind that this school corporation, along with most school corporations, have ongoing needs. And so we've structured those payments to always give you the flexibility to come back, fit new bonds in, in a way that's not going to increase the tax rate. And really, in this case, we're trying to drop this by a penny from 24 to 25. So the stated intention would be to go from a dollar five to a dollar four. As we talked about last month, we do not have your assessed value yet. That is a key component in calculating your tax rate. We hope to have it in the next month. Whether or not we have it by the August board meeting, I don't know. So we've just shown scenarios at this point, since we don't know what your assessed value is going to be. This page shows what the payments could look like if you only grew 2%. Again, looking back historically, you guys have been growing at a pretty rapid pace. This current budget year, we saw minimal AV growth. It was a little bit under 1%. So we're somewhat guessing on what the AV might look like, but I would guess it's going to be a little bit higher than what we're showing on this page. To get to the dollar four in 2025 and then have a little bit of a payment in 2026, you see you could borrow about $1.35 million. The reason that we're keeping the payment lower in 2026 is just to retain that flexibility that we kind of always talk about, that ongoing flexibility. This would still leave you room to come back in 2025 if there's an additional project, take up that payment and get to your desired tax rate. Looking at the next page, this is a little bit more aggressive in the assessed value growth. This looks at a 10% growth, which you guys have seen multiple times over the last few years. Whether or not you get to this number, we don't know. But again, just scenarios for now. Now you can see the orange bar takes up a lot, a bigger portion of the 2025 tax rate. Still solving for the dollar. twenty-five, uh, tax rate, still solving for the dollar four, uh, but the quicker your assessed value grows, the more money that you can borrow without increasing the tax rate. This still would give you room out in two thousand twenty-six for additional projects if you have them. Under this scenario, uh, this is how we came up with the three and a half million, so as we've done in years past, um, the legal process has to start earlier than when we have your assessed value, we've always set a number based on an aggressive assessed value growth. If that assessed value growth doesn't come, we just borrow a le- a lesser amount, so, these parameters have a maximum par amount of three and a half million dollars, this is not an all or none proposition, you can borrow any number up to that three and a half million dollars, you are not obligated to borrow that full amount, so if assessed value doesn't come in at ten percent, we'll just borrow a lesser number to make sure we still hit that dollar four. Uh, looking at the parameters, I know Jacob mentioned this a little bit, uh, we have three and a half million for the par amount, estimated cost of issuance, these are upfront professional fees, this is a conservative number, hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would leave proceeds available for the project cost, what actually goes into, uh, these projects that you discussed, three million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're showing estimated interest rates at six percent, I know I mentioned this last month, but these are not to exceed worst-case parameters, um, if you were to sell these bonds today, you're somewhere south of four percent, we're obviously not selling them today, rates could move between now and when you do sell them. Three and a half million at six percent comes up with an estimated interest expense of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, or two hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars, again, if and when we sell these bonds at hopefully a much lower interest rate, that interest expense is going to come down based on what the final interest rate is. Maximum tax rate impact, as we discussed last month, uh, in your resolution, uh, next month, it will show almost fifteen cents, uh, that's purely a calculation showing the maximum payment divided by your current assessed value, does not take into account the first picture I showed you, if some, if some of your debt is coming off or replacing it, what the taxpayers are going to see on their tax bills for the school's tax rate, uh, is not, it's going to be tax-neutral, it's actually going to be a, a one penny decrease, um, but I did want to mention that because it will state the fif- or almost fifteen cents, uh, in your resolution. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has, and if not, I appreciate your time.
Two slides back, the one point three-five, that's, that's assuming a two percent assessed on, what were the last year?
Point six-seven.
We're point six-seven.
But you guys had average, I didn't look at the average before I walked in here, five, six, seven percent in the five or six years before that, you grew twenty-four percent in that one year. So that's by far the lowest that we have seen in a very long time for this community. Part of that was legislative changes that we've talked about with the supplemental deduction, it was artificially held down, we would expect your, your number to be higher than two percent this year.
Then we'll, Matt, we'll, we'll make a decision based on that. How far in the weeds we're going to go with it?
Yeah, so as I create the budget, I'll create a placeholder for this, um, with those maximums in, in, in mind, and then when we go through the budgeting process, we know where the AV is, we have more discussion with the board about where we want to land this and what is, that we're trying to do, we'll continue to narrow down that scope and then get this down into, uh, what that looks like, and then like what we always do when we go through the budgeting process, I have you guys approve, uh, certain resolutions that allows, uh, uh, Dr. Sanders and I to, once we get our seventeen-eight-two notice, say, hey, we want to make X, Y, and Z change to, uh, the budget order, please make these changes to the budget order in order to make sure that we hit our total tax rate goals.
Any further questions or discussion?
You've already, have you already prioritized the needs?
Yes, we have prioritized the needs, yes, and so, I mean, obviously, one of the biggest things is the replacement of devices that are being used every day by our staff and our students, those are, um, at the pri- top of the priority list, and then we've kind of worked through kind of a, a list of other items, technology-wise, whether that's, uh, radios, or copiers, or servers, or, um, classroom projection, et cetera, there's different things like that that are, you know, known needs of, of replacement, and then obviously what, what we've done, uh, through working with, uh, Bose McKinnon and Jacob, is to create flexibility in there, that if the cost of the things that we know that we need to do becomes less than what we anticipate, we have the flexibility to use the funds on other needs of the school rather than be, um, pigeonholed into a corner and not be able to use those funds how we, how we need to at the time, and so, uh, we keep, you know, just like you talked about, the name of the game is flexibility, we try to make sure that there's maximum flexibility because as things develop, information changes and needs change, and so it allows us to adapt to that and make sure that we're being as responsive as possible.
Anything? Thank you, Matt, we appreciate that. Were there any, uh, public who would like to make, uh, comments on the Geo Bonds? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, we will now close the public hearing on the Geo Bonds. Thank you very much, we appreciate you guys, Jacob and Matt, coming in and, and helping us through this. So, uh, I'm going to go a little bit out of order here, uh, Mr. Durnall needs to leave, so I was going to see if he had any comments he'd like to make.
I'm not talking very well tonight, but I want to thank you all for, for that, for moving to five o'clock. Thank you for staying around, that's kind of neat, appreciate it, appreciate all the new people, but, again, I'm, I'm so proud of this, this system, and I, it, like I say, this is twenty-five, twenty-four years, it's the best board I've ever worked with, so, appreciate it, so, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good luck in the next meeting.
Well, yeah.
I do not believe there was anybody here from RBB.
No.
And, uh, so it is board number comments, so, um, Mr. Jacob, should you like to be on?
Uh, welcome, new and returning personnel, um, it's, the, the summer is drifting away very quickly, so, um, not much to say, you know, consider, um, bringing donations into your, um, students' classrooms, um, we always need them, there's always students that need things, um, so, I don't think there's any, anything else to say, enjoy the last few weeks before returning.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, thanks for everybody.
Welcome to the two new teachers, and just remember, there are no dumb questions, so it's okay to ask questions, uh, even Mr. Hornig, all right? So you're good to go, all right, good luck.
Mr. Boss?
Oh, just welcome, Gabby and Riley and, and everybody left, uh, I'm excited to see the progress in the building, the, the, uh, parking lot, it looks like it's being, I saw a lot of dirt moving today, and then it looks like they've started doing some stuff over, getting the ground ready over at the preschool, so I'm excited about that. But, uh, yeah, three weeks, hard to believe, it's always the hottest day of the year when you realize school's about to start, so, but, uh, I'm ready for it.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, just wanted to again, uh, thank Rick for all the hard work, our IT director, Rick, we're out in, uh, during this, uh, cyber scare, we didn't get attacked, we just got scared, so, um, so that's, uh, wonderful news, and, uh, and I really appreciate him. Um, there will be some growing pains with the projects, uh, EPS is, uh, with redoing, and EIS, with redoing the classrooms, um, that's, you know, they're going to have to move classrooms while renovations are being done, um, during the school year, why couldn't you do it during the summer? Well, there's lead times on casework and things like that, you got to do it when the, when the items are available, um, so we just really appreciate all the teachers and staff and, and all the, the work that's going to go into these projects on their behalf, um, I, I, I know it's, uh, uh, definitely a growing pain, but we appreciate you guys being able to, to work through those, um, uh, those difficult things, and, and as I said, there's other growing pains in the, in, uh, with, with some of the other projects as well, um, but the end result will be definitely worth it, um, and welcome again to all the new people and ones returning, uh, we greatly appreciate you and we, uh, you know, just, uh, this is a great place to be, so, uh, and, uh, as, uh, Mr. Tucker said, if you have any issues at all, reach out, and, and don't, 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 don't need to carry those, uh, around with you, so, uh, with that, I, I thank you all for coming, and this meeting's adjourned.